The committee, the whole meeting for March 28th. We are convened on the traditional and unceded territory of the Squamish Nation. Acting Mayor Anderson in the chair. Please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be available to the public to view on the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you have concerns, please notify the corporate officer present at the meeting. We have a presentation from the ambulance paramedics of British Columbia. I believe we are joined by President Troy Clifford, the ambulance paramedics and emergency dispatchers of B C. Mr. Clifford, are you joined by other colleagues? If you may introduce yourself, and I do recall a very engaging presentation from you approximately years, a year ago. And you may have some updates and perspectives to share with us again. Thank you. Please proceed.
Absolutely. Thank you. So the presentation, I have about 10 minutes and then some question and answer period, I understand. Is that?
Yes, Mr. Clifford.
Okay, thank you. So yes, I'm Troy Clifford. I'm the president with the ambulance paramedics of B C, as you you mentioned. I do have two colleagues with me that also are associated with the ambulance paramedics. One is a Squamish resident who's been a long time paramedic and now works as a Q P national rep. And that's Sherman Hillier. He lives in, works out of Squamish. He's our national representative with the Canadian Union of Public Employees. He's a transition from a paramedic life to our, our national rep. So he's obviously a resident of Squamish. And then also with us is another resident of Squamish, but has recently transitioned to Pemberton because she's got the unit chief spot. She runs the station in Pemberton and that's Kelly Budway. And so Kelly is also a regional vice president with the ambulance paramedics in the lower mainland, How Sound, Sunshine Coast region. And, and like I said, she's the chief in Pemberton, but has a lot of extensive knowledge of the Sea to Sky Highway. And I'll just, I don't know if they're muted or not, but if they, sorry, I thought they weren't on here to talk. So if they can, I don't know if they have anything to add to my introductions. Just quickly while we're, before I get into the whole presentation.
Hello, Kelly Budway. Thank you, Troy, for the introduction. I believe Troy has stated enough. Thank you for having us today.
Welcome, Ms. Budway.
And Sherman, did you have anything to add?
Hi there. Thanks for having me, Sherman Hillier. I had nothing to add over what Troy said. Figured out the camera, so that's, that's helpful.
Right. I stole their thunder. Um, yeah, so again, I'm Troy Clifford. I'm the president with the ambulance paramedics. And my role is to, is to lead the provincial local of the ambulance paramedics, which represents 4,600 paramedics across B C, as well as our dispatchers and call takers in every corner of this province. I've been a 35-year paramedic and when I'm not doing this job like my colleagues, I, I have a real job and I am the station chief, just like Kelly in Pemberton, but I'm in Asuas. So a lot of my experience is in the interior, but I work down in lower mainland and I spend a lot of time here. And both of the, all of us don't get to spend as much time on car as we'd like to. But all our paramedics and dispatchers that are union officers in, in the ambulance paramedics are working paramedics. And, and that's part of our structure. And so I've been a 35-year paramedic and definitely seen a few things. And we're going to, one of the things I, why I like to have in a conjunction with me that's local people is they, they can add another perspective. If you have questions on that, I'm fairly familiar with the area and the, and the How Sound and obviously, but it gives another perspective and gives some local people that you can contact. If you're not interested in talking to the provincial guy or if you have other questions locally. So that's sort of what our thing is. But today is really about opening that conversation, continuing the dialogue that we've had with communities and their needs and, and that. So I'll, I'll just go over a few things quickly and I think they'll stimulate a lot of questions. So we can save that till after the quick presentation. There's a lot of things to cover off and it's really key to continuing these relationships with the municipalities and local governments from our perspective. So like I said, there's a couple of things that are unique to the ambulance paramedics of B C. We, like I mentioned, we're the traditional union that does all the representation for all those members that I mentioned. Labor relations on our statute duties under the labor code, representation, bargaining, all that sort of stuff. So that's our traditional union role. But in B C, we're also very unique in the sense that we are also the professional voice of paramedics in B C. And what that means is, is that we're the, the voice of paramedics as part of the Paramedic Association Canada. We're the B C chapter. So we do that dual role and that's unique to us compared to most professions and unions. Because most have a separate entity as a, as an association or a union, including Paramedic Association across Canada. So that's a, and it's just the way it was set up in B C. And quite frankly, it's really important for us because that's how our members identify. So why that's important to tell you that background is that's why you see us at these type of engagements. Is that our role are in lobbying communities for resources, service delivery, increased scope of practice and care that we can provide our patients and relationships with the local governments and our partners in public safety, police and fire, emergency preparedness and those sorts of things. And that's, and why we do that is because our, our members actually expect that of us. And it's part of a key to our overall advocacy and representation. So there's another dual role that we have in B C. It's, and it's also unique to us. It's we're the only profession that crosses two boundaries. And that's, you know, obviously we're a health union, we're a health profession. And that's our linkage to the health authority through, obviously under the Ministry of Health, Provincial Health Services Authority, and ultimately the B C A H S that runs the ambulance service. So this is all exciting stuff and, and, but what that means is that we're clinically and our, our structure is within the health authorities. But we're also designated the public safety occupation nationally as part of our, and what that means is we're designated at public safety in the same sense as police and fire corrections and all those agencies that are considered public safety. And that, and we cross synchronized very well between those two parts of our job. The lights and sirens side of the world and the working with our partners on the streets and in the, in the emergency. And why that's also important, it's the emergency preparedness and our, our relationship with your communities, whether it be police, fire, search and rescue, all the emergency preparedness and public safety side of things. So we transition obviously clinically through our care, through the health side of things. But we transition to the public safety very well. And a lot of people want to pigeonholes into those one or the other, but we're actually quite comfortable navigating between the two. And, and it's actually always the way we did it. It's more a challenge for a lot of other people than us. So all that stuff is why you see us talking to municipalities. About four years ago, I really identified when I came into this role as president, that we didn't have the relationship that we used to with the municipalities and local governments. And that's a product of a lot of things, going back to early 2010, when we were put into the Provincial Health Services Authority and we diverged our relationship with the, in emergency preparedness and emergency management. So flash forward from that time to the heat dome. And we all remember that in late June of 2021 and early July. And that was really a culminating point in, in B C H S where quite frankly, we lost over 700 people in this province to the heat dome. And, and leading up to the heat dome, the B C ambulance service never opened up an E O C. They never did any real preparation. And this isn't me saying this, this is what the public said, the media said. And to a point where the response or lack of the response of B C ambulance was questioned publicly and also by the government. Within two weeks, on July 14th, the government announced significant advancements and changes to the B C H S and with direction, including things like reinstating the emergency management division within B C H S. Some changes to the government's adding a B C S board. All these things that were done in the July 14th and the July and December 3rd announcements of 2021 that put us on a path to recovery. We're not there yet, but you guys are well known about the history and the challenges that we've had over the last couple of years. I can say with certainty over the last six months that with the, the work we've done through bargaining and getting a, a strong collective agreement, it's really allowed us to put a foundation to move ahead with some of our recruitment and challenges and resource issues and training and all these sorts of things. And another role that Kelly has and Sherman have is they were key parts of our bargaining team that were able to help us negotiate this collective agreement that is, is helping us. So that's all sort of the history stuff. But why we, this is really about building those relationships and continuing the relationship with you guys and how we can work better with our partners in the municipal government. And you, you know, that ambulance services and health is part of the responsibility of the provincial government under the Ministry of Health and ultimately B C H S. But what it does is impact your citizens in your community. And it impacts your resources, like your fire, your, your public safety, police resources. And our challenges end up defaulting to those agencies and ultimately the citizens of Squamish and the district. If they don't get the care they need and that. So what we do is I've put together a few buckets that we can discuss and where we can work together. And the key one that I, is really about resources. One of the key ones is about resources in your community. We've been fortunate through those announcements that the government did that a number of resources have been added in the, in the Sea to Sky corridor, including a second 24-hour full-time ambulance into Squamish. So we have two 24-hour full-time ambulances. That hasn't added resources in Squamish because it, we always had two ambulances. One was just a call-out ambulance under that precarious model. But they have added resources in, in Whistler and Pemberton. But the, I can tell you with assurance that we need to add significant resources to meet the demands of the How Sound and Squamish area. You know, the growth that you're seeing in taxes that, and, and that, and the hospital resources are diminished. Our inter-facility transfers put a lot of pressure on taking resources out of your community. And it's not unique to your area, but as you know, the challenges with you. And we have significant volume in the community north to you that can pull resources out. And same with the city. We see this in a lot of communities and I don't know if you're aware of the tragic events that went on last summer with, in Ashcroft and Barrier and recently in the Cusack where those were a direct result of not having ambulances in our community that were pulled into another community. And we see this around all the urban centers. And it's happening in your valley. And it's one of the beauties of our system that we don't, we don't have boundaries. But when you're understaffed in other areas or under resource and you pull resources out of communities, that puts your patients at risk as well as the inter-facility transfers can wear them. So what we need to do is arm you with the tools or support you to ask the right questions, why the resources are not at the level to meet you. So we know every year, 6% of, we add 6% call volume in communities. And under the July 14th announcement last year, the Minister of Health announced that in urban and metro areas, which you guys would fall under the urban model, the expectation is to meet the national benchmarks where you, you, where 90% of the time in the highest security calls, the red and purple, so those are the most serious calls. We code each level of call and it's just how we prioritize our calls. But the highest security calls, the heart attacks, the cardiac arrest, the serious motor vehicle accident, all that are considered the highest of the two categories. So in 90% of the time, the national standard is you should get to those calls in 8.59 minutes on average. Now, we know that that's not going to, 8.59 minutes when you're meeting in an emergency situation is an eternity. We know that in cardiac arrest, muscle dies after three minutes. So it's not that it's the optimum, that's a national landmark. And he committed that, when I say he, the Minister of Health committed that that would be the expectation. Unfortunately, those measures have not been put in place yet. So we're keeping the pressure on and that's an area we can work with you to lobby, to get the appropriate level of resources for your community and your, your patients ultimately. And also to support you with ensuring that you have the right resources in your health facility. The Squamish General Hospital and we can, you know, lobby for expanded coverage there and, and needs that are met. We don't have advanced life support P R U, a response unit in, in Squamish would be another great resource to add. So there's a lot of areas we can help you lobby for that. The other key area is working to better with the municipalities around emergency management. The direction was that we would institute a new division of emergency management back into the ambulance service. That's been put in place, but the relationship has not went back to where, when we know that when we have a bus crash, a major incident, heat domes or environmental flooding, which we're going to see this year. We know that working and planning together with our municipalities in emergency management is key to responding to these incidents. And the ambulance service hasn't been at the table for a long time in those areas. And that's where we can work with our leader locally, our unit chief, B J Schut, and the local people so that they know when they get out to these calls or have a major incident, they know who they're working with and we can prepare and plan together. So resources, support, and adding, and then the third big bucket that we really believe is it, I know that it's not unique to the downtown east side. It's mental health and addictions are a large workload for us and your public safety organizations. And, and what that means homelessness, all these areas that are challenged for response in a community. We have a community paramedic program. There's only one in the How Sound and it's not even filled right now. And that's in Kelly's community in, in Pemberton. And this is the program that was developed a number of years ago for rural and remote B C to help with community health responses and alternate pathways. We, I met with communities all over the province and we're well situated to move this to a metro urban model. And it could support the community wellness and these responses to addiction and mental health and that. And part of these, we, we really don't have paramedics as part of these car 67s or the mental health teams and that. And they can really support those teams so that they do the paramedic thing, care side of things. And, and so there's some conversations that we've had with the Ministry of Addictions and Mental Health about this. And many communities are like Squamish are well positioned to have a support team, like a community paramedic or a secondary response team that can help with these alternate pathways, whether it be community health, addiction specialists. Because we know that the best place for a lot of these people is not in the back of an ambulance, an emergency department or a police car. But the problem is there's no care or there's no alternate pathways or supports generally. I shouldn't say no, there are, there's limited and depends on the community. And that ends up by default at two o'clock in the morning when somebody's having addiction or a mental health crisis, it ends up being an R C M P or a police officer and a paramedic there trying to do their best. And that may not be the best unless they're needing a critical intervention. So we need to make sure that we can put the supports in place so that not everybody is tying up these emergency rooms. So that's a lot of stuff that throw at you. And what I can provide you is all the follow-up information again, and, and really just opening up these conversations and arming you with the tools to ask the right questions to ensure that we don't download costs to the communities. And I know that your budgets are just as strapped as everybody else. And, and when I started this with ambulance services and health, it's part of the provincial government's mandate. But it's also the responsibility, I believe, of communities to hold the government and B C H accountable to make sure that your citizen get an ambulance in a timely fashion, which unfortunately hasn't happened in every community around this province. So I'm going to leave it at that. I'm just going to pass over to Kelly and see if she had anything that I missed. And then we'll just, just high level Kelly and then we let them ask us questions.
Ms. Budway. Thanks, Troy. Just to, to follow up on that in regards to the resources that we have in Squamish. We do have currently two full-time Alpha Cars, so it's a 24/7 resource. They do day shifts, they do night shifts, and that is a new change. We have had a one 24/7 Alpha Car there for a while, quite for some time now. I believe it was November of 2021 that that was moved from a day-only car to a 24/7 resource. And more recently, we had a Kilo call, which was the pager duty, so 24/7, but it's all call-out. So they have a, to respond to the station in a reasonable amount of time after being paged. And then through COVID, we did have a surge resource there. It was a 12-hour, seven-day week car, a Juliet, which was to help with mainly inter-facility transfers in and out of the corridor that ended up getting sucked into Metro Post. So we've actually gone from three resources down to two. So while having that 24/7 coverage for two of our, our cars is fantastic, it is actually a decrease to the services provided and what's available in the community. So, and if one of those gets sent out on an inter-facility transfer down to the lower mainland, that leaves only one resource, that, that resource is then busy tied up on a car. On a call and the next closest ambulance could be Whistler. As far as, and unfortunately, cars get pulled down south from the corridor, but they never get pushed up from the city. So we don't have that overflow. There is no overflow from Vancouver Post because they are already overtaxed in that area. So Squamish ends up seeing the bridge of the problem there.
Thank you for that, presenting that picture, Ms. Budway. I think we'll turn it over to council for questions. If you may have any questions or observations, I'll go first with councillor Stoner and then to Mayor Hurford.
Yeah, thanks so much for being here and for painting the picture and containing to provide us with updates on where we can be most successful and supportive in our advocacy. I think it's very true that the reality is that when B C ambulance is not being effectively supported and funded, that it does have direct implications on, on our budgets because it means that the police and the firefighters are showing up. So they are intertwined and we can't pull the pieces apart. I have a few specific questions. I was, I was certain that the last time we received an update, there was a good news story that the Juliet car was actually going to be maintained after the surge capacity. But that sounds like that's not the case. So I just want to clarify that we've lost that surge capacity.
Yeah, so what happened with, sorry, did I cut you off? Sorry. So what happened was under the rural and remote and indigenous framework, there was a 55 additional surge resources, ambulances across the province that were put in place temporarily to manage or to help with the surge capacity during COVID. But then Premier announced in April 2020 that those would, after COVID, they would become permanent. So last fall, we started negotiating how that would impact. So what happened was that we had a call-out ambulance, a full-time 24-hour ambulance, as Kelly mentioned, plus we had a daytime surge resource. So we had three during the day and two at night. One was a call-out ambulance, obviously. What they did was under the surge conversions, under the rural and remote, they converted that 24-hour call-out ambulance to a full-time ambulance and took away the third ambulance during the day. So it's an add, but it's sort of like what they do is say, we've added all these resources, but they really are conversions and definitely there's no question, full-time. We know that that holds them accountable. We don't have that precarious model of on-call and we've been advocating for that. But we absolutely need a third ambulance there to handle the capacity and the community resources. So that's what happened. Technically, it was a conversion. We added full-time positions, but we don't have any more physical ambulances staffed.
Okay, that's helpful. One piece of data that I think we've asked for, for a few times and I am just curious if you're tracking at all, is how often we're left without ambulance service in our community? So this idea that we lose cars either to the north or to the south, that would be one piece for me that I think would be really helpful to know from an advocacy perspective is like really how vulnerable is our community at what percentage of the time? And I don't know if that's something that is reasonable to ask of you folks.
Well, I think Kelly might have some input into this, but I can tell you, B C H S does not provide those statistics to us. For probably, you can probably imagine why. But I can tell you, and I know Kelly and Sherman can tell you, that daily we have a liability or potential liabilities where we don't see the resources in every community, including Squamish. So Kelly, I don't know if you want to articulate what your experience of just working up there that we see.
Yeah, and Troy said it well in that the employer, B C H S, definitely won't provide any numbers to you. And it is, it is hard to determine those numbers because what happens is there all, always will be coverage. It's just where it's coming from and how long it's going to take to get to you. So that coverage may be coming from Whistler. If there's only one car in Whistler, both cars from Squamish are out on a call or in the city, wherever they may be. And there's a car available in Whistler, that car will be sent from Whistler closer to Squamish. So they're, they're sitting at a cross-cover point and that's actually the salt ship on Highway 99. So it's actually taking probably about 20 minutes, give or take, to get to either direction. There's nobody who lives there. So unless there's a motor vehicle accident somewhere along the highway in between Whistler and Squamish, that vehicle is of no use where it is. But how do you cover two communities, two very large communities with a huge population? And the employer's response to that is to put them in a cross-cover point. Another big cross-cover point would be between Station 255 West Vancouver and Squamish is Britannia Beach or Porto Cove is another cross-cover point. And while there is community there, the call volume there is not necessarily as high. The call volume tends to come from West Vancouver or from Squamish, not so much in between, other, with the exception of the motor vehicle accidents. So to say Squamish is uncovered, we, I can't really speak to that because it's just a matter of a provincial service and where that car is coming from and how long it will take to get them to you.
Thank you, Ms. Budway. This is very interesting. I'll just move to, I'll have Mayor Hurford up next. Just in the interest of time, Mr. Clifford, we'll come back to you after. Mayor Hurford.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation today. And it was nice to hear about the sort of alignment on advocacy for expanded resources at our, at our hospital. And it got me to thinking around the Vancouver Coastal Health master planning process and how, how you see the ambulance service engaging in that. And if you have, and if you feel that that's what's planned there is adequate or if you've, yeah, just to sort of that, that piece so we can understand where there may be holes.
Yeah, absolutely. In, in our experience, the ambulance service tends to be an arms-length discussion around planning or an afterthought that, and, and that's partially because we're the Provincial Health Services Authority and each health authority has their own sort of structures and planning process. And it's siloed in a lot of ways, in my opinion. And, and what it doesn't do is include, so for instance, when they change resources or diminish resources or they don't take into account the, generally, they don't take into account the, the added pressure on. So say your C T unit's down or you don't have doctors in the merge. That puts additional pressure on our resources or you know, you have critical care patients that need. So that planning, when, when things are changed or, or that, needs to intimately involve the transport agency that provides those services. So the answer is there is not, at the, at the operational level, I don't see a lot across this province, a lot of, of planning that goes in together between the different organ, health authorities and/or the provincial health services authority that runs the ambulance service ultimately. So there's definitely an area that needs to go in there. And what are the implications on that, then the interaction between the ambulances and, and the health authorities and the local facilities and community health too, right?
Yeah, thank you. And I just, I suppose to follow up with that, just, and I think I know the answer. I just want to get the, is that at this point, there's no direct point or formal point of input for the ambulance service into that Vancouver Coastal Health master planning process. We're not going to be the first part of that, that change. We're not scheduled to be the first part of that change of taking that more holistic approach is what you're, is what I'm hearing you tell me right now. Is that correct?
That's our belief. I don't believe that, it's never been reported out that there is a overall connection to that. There may be at high levels of, of health authorities that people aren't aware of, but I don't think that's effective if that's the case. You know, you know, we, we talked at Whistler, I think you were there at Q B C M just around the lack of family physicians. And the impact that puts on communities and the resources in the community, not just ambulance services, is incredible. And you know, those are areas that we need to work together on as community response teams and, and part of the community health. And paramedics and the ambulance service tends to be an afterthought or a secondary thought. Oh, we should have talked to them. And I think that we need to be in that conversation on the front lines, operationally, how it would impact patient care and the citizens as opposed to an afterthought. And that's generally our experiences, I think.
Thank you.
Councillor Penningill, did I see your hand? Did you have a question?
Uh, I think maybe it's, it's better, it's maybe a council discussion item for, for later. So I'll withhold it. Thank you.
Um, well then, I'll just wrap up by expressing thanks to Ms. Budway, Mr. Hillier, Mr. Clifford. Thank you for taking this initiative and for your orientation regarding your organization and your profession. This is very timely. We have as council, not only the opportunity, as do the public, to participate in the upcoming Vancouver Coastal Health public engagement and master planning process. But also we have our local M L A that we can work with to direct questions through the spending and estimate sessions of, of the House. And your theme has been advocacy and you've offered some tools and pictures to, for us to help us to pose the right questions and we're very appreciative of this. Once again, thank you for a very interesting presentation.
Thank you very much on behalf of our team. And if any questions come up, you have our contacts and we can definitely answer them. Or if you want further support, we're definitely, and we'll follow up with those resources just so you have those tools to move ahead.
Very good. Thank you. Council, we're Council, we're due for another presentation from our staff member, Sarah Morris, Arts and Culture Manager, and from guest Karen Clark, the Executive Director of the Squamish Community Foundation. Are we ready to proceed the presentation? Very good then. And this is a presentation on the Squamish Community Foundation Annual Report and Community Grants. When you're ready.
Hi, everyone. As mentioned, I'm Karen Clark from the Squamish Community Foundation. I'm the Executive Director there. And I would like to thank Mayor and Council for the opportunity to speak today about the twenty twenty two Community Enhancement Grant Process and a little bit about the recipients, as well as some observations that we made in twenty twenty two. Just a little bit about the Squamish Community Foundation. So we've been around since two thousand and four. We were established by a group of like minded community citizens who were business people, as well as representing many organizations in town. And we receive donations each year from individual organizations and corporate donors. In turn, we provide those invested donations to the community, to local nonprofit organizations and individuals during our annual grants process every year. And that's the disbursements that are made from the investments that we make every year. So we've been doing that since two thousand and four to nonprofits and charities that work in areas such as culture, health, and the environment. We also run the Neighborhood Small Grants Program and other granting opportunities. Right now, we're running the Recovery Fund, which is a federal grant funds that are supporting COVID recovery for nonprofit organizations. And lastly, lastly, you may have heard, we're right in the middle of a vital science process, and we're hoping to produce that report at the end of May this year. To date, we've distributed almost one million in funding to community nonprofits. Yeah, sorry, do you need me? There you go. Okay, we'll get this straight here. So the applications have to show some element that they support the official community plan. And I'm sure you're familiar with those parts of the the goals of the official community plan. So the application, the grant application and dispersal process went very smoothly in twenty twenty two. It was our second round running the grants. And they opened in September. They closed about six weeks later in November twelfth, twenty twenty one. The Grant Dispersal Committee, which is a committee of about seven or eight folks, we try to bring in as many different populations and people from different groups in towns. We've got some youth representation, senior representation, LGBTQ, and different populations in town that sit on the committee. So we continually strive to make that committee diverse. And so they deliberated and then made decisions on December seventh, and checks were dispersed. The district staff approved the decisions, and then checks were dispersed in December and January twenty twenty two. And then programming ran throughout twenty twenty two. So we had a great collaboration again with Squamish Arts, and we did the promotion together, as well as held a town hall on October twentieth. And yeah, I mean, we do, we do advertising on Facebook and on our website as well. So from that, we received twenty six applications in twenty twenty two. One application was redirected back to Squamish Arts, and another was redirected back to the District of Squamish because it was for event traffic control. And then we had two applications from Cedar Sky Community Service. You can see some of the populations and areas of interest that came in through the applications there. So we had quite a few. So remember, this was during COVID. So we had quite a high number of physical and mental health and social well being applications, for seniors programming and children and youth were kind of at the top there for twenty twenty two. In twenty twenty three, so I've been asked to just touch briefly, we just have finished the process for the twenty twenty three applications. So just to note that the applications that we were applied this year, so we received thirty one applications, they went up in twenty twenty three. It was about the same amount of money that was applied for though. But generally, the the areas of interest that were slightly different, there was a higher number of environmental stewardship and sustainability applications in twenty twenty three, and quite a few more vulnerable and low income families that programming that was applied for. But the same, yes, so the funding requested in total was around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is considerably more than than what we have to fund, which is around ninety eight thousand dollars. So that was the same for for these last two years. So as far as the grant criteria and scoring go, all applications have to meet at least one of these types of programming. So that's decolonization reconciliation, intergenerational programming, neighborhood connectivity, environmental stewardship, equity, diversity, and inclusion, physical health, mental health, social well being, youth led initiatives, programming for vulnerable populations and recreation programming. There are nine other criteria that they have to meet on the application. Some of those include clarity of project goals and activities, the degree to which community groups partner and collaborate, the degree to which the official community plan goals are supported, and how the project fosters community involvement. This year, we weighted the criteria, and so any given question could be worth between three and five points, which seemed to work quite well for the committee. So here you can see the results of the dispersal meeting that we had. And the Squamish River Watershed Society was seemed to be number one there. And then Squamish Helping Hands Under One Roof, they received the most amount of funding. They were third, and Squamish Climate Action Network was was second. The Squamish Offroad Cycling Association ran a program that was the Youth First Nation Mountain Bike Program. And they received one of the higher amounts of funding, along with the Howstown Women's Center drop in programming. And then the rest, sort of the search and rescue there had applied for flashing lights for their emergency vehicle. So that's what that little bit of higher amount of funding there as well. So, yeah, and as you can see, there is the total amount of funding that was dispersed in twenty twenty two. So I'll just give you a brief view of some of the applications. So here we have the Open Door Health Under One Roof Primary Care Clinic. Once again, they were, they received the ten thousand dollars in funding. So they opened their clinic in February twenty twenty two to vulnerable folks who previously did not have a physician with access to primary care in a location where they can comfortably and easily see the doctors. So the clinic is right at Helping Hands. There's three local physicians involved in that project, and they now have a hundred and forty eight patients. And they see folks for common conditions such as wound care, foot care, STD testing, improved medication management, medical attention, diagnostic testing. And they are able to improve access to treatment, to detox, and much more. So there's quite a bit of success with this clinic. And they're anecdotally, the Squamish General Hospital is reporting a decrease in visits to the emergency room by the clinics of the patients or by the patients of the clinic. So, yeah, and then there's a little quote down there at the bottom. Our next project is the Squamish Cricket Club. They just started up in twenty twenty two. And there's a nice little part of this project, which is encapsulated in that first quote there. And it says, Squamish is a changing community, and there has been an increase in cultural diversity which should be celebrated. The Squamish Cricket Club has potential of being one of those channels to bring together people, locals, and newcomers to Canada, like through the medium of sport. So, yeah, that's a pretty neat little part of that project. And so they ended up purchasing some equipment and a temporary playing surface. They were applying for a permanent playing surface, but we did not have the money that was necessary for that. So we were able to help them with that. They have forty eight members now, and they've played a few games, and they have four local sponsors. That's them. And then the Squamish River Watershed Society Outreach Program. So they were the number one program that received the highest amount of points. And they've been around for a long time running this program. It's five days of school programming in different local parks and one day at for the public at Judd Beach. So they reached about three hundred and seventy five students from grades kindergarten to six, and that's mostly a release and education around or a release of co host salmon and education around that. And then the public event had two hundred and twenty people coming out to celebrate, and they released forty thousand co hosts, so lots of of great work going on there. The nice thing about this project is the amount of volunteers they have, they're really dedicated to the program and show up for, you know, a lot of the classes and whatnot. And they have a nice partnership with the Tenderfoot Creek Hatchery, as well as the Men's Shed for, and they create those wooden salmon cutouts for them. So then we have the a couple of programs. So the programs and funding don't always go quite as planned. So there is a couple of examples here of that. So the Squamish Environmental Conservation Society, their bird friendly Squamish program, they applied for quite a an amount of money, which we weren't able to give them, but we did give them some, which they were able to work with. But the their ability to get volunteers together and make the kinds of observations that they wanted to make wasn't quite there. So however, they were able to log eighty five observations, and then they did find some dead birds that at a particular location, the Four Winds Apartment Building on the Mamquam Blind Channel. And there they were able to see that the the birds were hitting the glass railing there. So in the long run, the solution to that is to put up applications on the glass railing there, like stickers to stop the birds from going there. So the problem with this project was that by the time they were done making all of the observations, it was too cold to get the stickers up on the glass railing. So they're going to be doing that this spring, so they're a little bit behind schedule. And the one other thing that I wanted to note about that program was that the Four Winds Building was amenable to them having volunteers there and doing the research, but they had quite a bit of trouble getting other buildings to participate in the program. So it sounds like there's a bit of education that needs to be done still if we want to have a bird friendly community. And then just a quick note on the Squamish Senior Center Society. They ran a number of their events, but weren't able to run all of them due to COVID nineteen restrictions in early twenty twenty two. So the, oh, we're back, come back to this one. But yeah, no problem. So this, there we go, Cedar Sky Community Services, Food Skills for Families Program, Great Cooking Education Program. They ran three sessions, one with the Healthy Pregnancy Outreach Program, where twelve perinatal mothers participated, another with the Farmers Market Nutrition Program, where twelve families participated. And then their last program, and they're about eight sessions each, where they cook together, they learn together, and they eat together. They had, that was a seniors program, and they had twelve seniors involved in that program. Few more, the Squamish Minor Hockey Association received some funding to supplement registration fees for the youth that participate in the sport. And they saw after COVID, they saw quite an interest in hockey, and there was an uptick in the amount of players and the amount of female participation in hockey this year. And lastly, there's the Better at Home Lunch and Learns for Seniors. You've seen this one before. So they ran some new presentations in twenty twenty two with the Alzheimer's Society, and then they had some cross cultural conversations. The Cedar Sky Hospice Society ran a volunteer program. They had seventeen volunteers, which is a great number for them. They're really happy with with how many volunteers that they've got with them now. And then finally, just some observations over the course of the last few years and things that we want to keep working on. We'll continue to review and update and improve the application and guidelines. This year, we're hoping to clearly state how much, how how much funds are available for the entire community. So, you know, it's ninety eight thousand dollars. We do say that, but we just want to make that a bit more clear. And we're going to make recommended budget request limits. So we often get applications that ask for a lot of money that just isn't going to work with with how much we have. So we're just going to make it easier on everybody and recommend fifteen thousand as a maximum to apply for. And that also comes as a request from applicants to that they that we give them those numbers. So we're hoping to work with the district to establish more clarity around how many applications an organization can put in. As you saw, Cedar Sky put in a couple of applications for different programs, but we just want a little bit more clarity around that. We're also looking for more clarity around organizations who are already receiving permissive tax exemptions and their eligibility for community enhancement grants, as well as more clarity for facility rental, DOS facility rental requests. We're, we'll keep discussing what we had. This year, we had quite a few applications for facility rental requests, which has been different than the other years. So we're just looking for a clear process for that. So I'd like to thank the District of Squamish for the opportunity to administer administer the grants again. And we'd also like to thank you for offering this type of support to the community each year.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for our guests? I do have one, maybe I'll start off. Perhaps this question for Ms. Morris. In the activity chart under the Grant Summary Report, district staff approved grant dispersal recommendations offered by the foundation. Could you describe further what kind of considerations you're applying or what kind of evaluation criteria you are bringing on behalf of the district for that exercise?
Thank you, Chair. This is a requirement of the community grant policy. And staff review the report from the Community Foundation and also Squamish Arts for anything that, any legal or legislative parameters that maybe we shouldn't be granting, maybe a commercial business or something that doesn't meet our policy requirements. The CAO and the CFO are part of the review, and the CAO is the ultimate authority on approving that report.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner. Oh, I missed Counselor Penningill. Please go ahead. Counselor Penningill.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question about the the Open Door Health Under One Roof Primary Care Clinic, and just an understanding if that that grant was the whole of their funding? Or is that just a top up or a piece of of what they required?
Thank you, Counselor Penningill. It is just a piece. There's a huge amount of funding that's necessary for that primary care clinic. And I've just heard that they've received quite a bit of funding recently for this year. But, yeah, I guess there's, you know, a thought that is covered by the Provincial Health Authority, but very little of it is. They are definitely in partnership with them, but they need to find external funding. And, yeah, I don't know the amount, but yes, this was, this was just a small portion.
Okay, thanks, Chair. If I could maybe leave a comment, then I I guess I'm mostly glad to hear that, but it does strike me as like such a valuable, incredible project. But it's also a core fundamental health service that I'm not sure we should be funding from community enhancement grants. I wouldn't want to do something that sees it go away, but maybe this is a piece that we need some advocacy on. And so just kind of want to flag that. This is one that jumped out at me as as maybe not a community enhancement grant thing exactly, just so fundamental and important as a as a health. just so fundamental and important as a health service.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, through the Chair. Thanks for the presentation and for all the work. A few questions. The program has always been very oversubscribed, even when it was done internally, but we have, the policy says up to 1% of general taxation, and that is more than $98,000. So I'm just curious if, I don't think I see finance staff, but maybe Ms. Morris can speak to this, about the last time that we increased that funding envelope and when we might want to consider. That's obviously a council decision at budget, but if we've given any thought to that discussion.
Thank you, through the Chair. So that 1% includes multiple agreements. So there is the Squamish Arts Agreement for the Arts and Culture Grant, as well as an agreement with Sorka that live under that 1% of funding. At the time that these agreements were entered into, we were in the middle of the pandemic, and it was unclear where taxation revenue was going at that point. And so we decided, council decided that the agreements would be set at the same rate for the duration. However, there is room within that grant envelope that hasn't been assigned currently. For the next two years, we can provide details of that through finance for council's consideration should they wish to increase the amount to the recipients. I think we're a little bit late for 2023, but maybe rolling that over and providing that in 2024.
That's helpful. Thank you for that context. And then just a few other operational questions. I am curious if the scoring matrix that grants are assessed against is publicly available, as well as the composition of the committee, and if there's any structure around how frequently those seats change over in the process for filling them.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. The scoring matrix is available. We show what all the questions are in the guidelines, and then it shows the weighting of the, each individual question. So yes, and then as far as the committee, it's, it could be public. It's not public information right now, but it could totally be put somewhere where who it is. And it does change, and people sort of come and go. We have a sort of a large grants committee, and with each granting cycle, some people can participate and others can't, and we're constantly seeking new members as well, and just kind of, or trying to keep it diverse as possible. Was there, are you recommending that we make it public?
I'm not sure if I have a specific recommendation at this point. I was just curious. I think, I think given how it can somewhat be a little bit fluid in terms of who sits there, it might be tricky to keep it up to date. But I do think having some visibility on who's making the decision, it's one of the things that we considered when we did transfer this from being an open discussion around the council table is to another entity, is what is the visibility that the community has in terms of how that money gets allocated and who's making those decisions? So might be something to think about. And if there's like any specific reasons as to not, then I'm happy to hear them, but it's just something that jumped to mind. And then my last question was going to be around the last question that you raised on your slide of the in-kind requests. And I know that this is something that maybe we didn't give full some thought to when we did create the policy, and I guess a question to staff of like, have, we started to contemplate how we start to address that? Because I suspect we've kind of created two tiers where there's people who are coming to ask the district for in-kind support on top of the community enhancement grants, and how do we start to marry those processes together?
Thank you, through the Chair. It is an ever-evolving conversation. However, staff are looking at a solution to this particular, I was going to say problem, but challenge for 2024. I guess we're doing the grants agreement renewal next year, and so contemplating these challenges will be part of that and a broader policy update potentially.
I just wanted to thank Counselor Stoner, just wanted to respond to your thought there about the making the members of the committee public. There's just some thoughts maybe around privacy there, around, you know, there's people adjudicating grants and whatnot, and I'm not sure. Yeah, if there's responses and people have questions and whatnot, they should all technically come through me as the administrator of the grant. So yeah, that might be one reason why we wouldn't. So I just wanted to say that for a thought. Yeah.
For the questions, Counsel? Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. And I think this is more for staff. The observation slide has requests for some specific bits of feedback from council. So I'm wondering, should we expect this to come back to us, or should we contemplate some kind of motion that directs this? Any thoughts and guides you have on that would be helpful.
Thank you, Counselor French. There is not, if I want to go through point, 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 I guess the first suggestion to limit the cap of funding, there's nothing that precludes the community foundation from doing that in their agreement or in the policy. And so that could be put in place. I think what we were trying to achieve today was socializing that with council to see if there were any objections to that. And then with the other suggestions here, we would want to maybe formalize that through policy upon the policy renewal and agreement renewal. And so if council do have direction on those amendments, then that would be great to have that formalized through a motion. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the companies or organizations which use the services of the Squamish Community Foundation to disperse monies. And I'm thinking of the example of Squamish terminals. If I'm not mistaken, they're utilizing or have the community foundation as an arms-length vehicle for them to assist in dispersing project money in the community. Is that administered separately, or is that activity on behalf of Squamish terminals or other partners reflected in the summary report and activity plan we have before us?
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. It is a separate process. So we run an annual grants process, which is actually coming up soon every year, and it is focused on our endowment funds and the interest that's made off of those each year is what makes our annual grants. So it's a separate process.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll offer one more, and then I'll go to Mayor Hereford. We have other agencies in the corridor who offer community grants, Whistler Black Home, Woodfire LNG as well. Do you have liaison with them, or do you compare notes as regards priority fields or gaps that might be covered in themes or areas of project interest, for example? Do you compare notes with them so that we maybe are addressing grants or addressing gaps, if you like, and learning from each other as regards administration?
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. I have chatted with WLNG, not so much Whistler Black Home, but I think that's a great suggestion. Typically, we receive the applications and go from there and adjudicate based on our criteria. But yeah, and you know, I definitely see what they're granting to and who in our community is also receiving funding through those grants. So yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Hereford.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you so much for the presentation today and for all the work that I know that it takes to administer this, and it's great to see the positive impact on the community. I'm going to go to the, to the observation slide, and I think I'm happy to hear that that max funding piece is something that you could, the foundation could do at their discretion, and I totally think that's, that's appropriate, and I would support your, whatever number you came up with that you felt would help you in your, in your process and would help the applicants understand the context of the process. So I think that's fine. And, you know, the other three points, I think, deserve some, some work, and I'd like to have those discussions. And my vision would be that those would roll into the, to the updates. So we have a bit of time to do that. I don't think there, it just feels with the timeline for the renewal that that seems like a natural, a natural fit. So, and I think each one deserves its own debate. I can see pros and cons already. I can hear some of this debate already as, as we see it. So I would look forward to seeing that, but I don't have a position on any of those three at this point, except that recognizing they're going to, they do deserve some, some consideration. But I think the timing piece, I think it can be a later piece with this, except for maybe this facilities rental one, because I think there might, maybe that's the first one. But I'd look forward to seeing staff's opinion on the, the order that we, that we tackle these, these pieces or prioritization. But yeah, but I do think that with the renewal coming, that seems like the most natural fit to make sure we have everything in place so that we can actually do that the most effectively. Thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, just picking up on that, I'm curious, though, if Ms. Clark, you're seeking some sense of direction as you go into the 2023 granting cycle, or if that's already kind of, you feel confident going into it, and this is okay to kind of postpone to the 2024 kind of review of the policy? Or is there something that is a little bit more imminent here for this year's granting cycle?
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. So we're finished with the 2023 granting process, but certainly for the 2024 process, which will start up again this fall, we'd be looking for some direction.
Seeing no further questions or comments from council, I will then thank our, oh, did I miss Counselor Pedengal again? Okay, very good. Please proceed with your motion, Counselor Stoner.
Let me just make sure I get my wording right here. So I would like to put a motion on the floor that direct staff to bring back a discussion on a review of the community grant policy by the fall of 2023. I won't put a timeline on it, given Ms. Morris's wide eyes.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. If I may, the community foundation and Squamish Arts start to initiate the grant process as early as October. So we would be looking to have those policy amendments in place prior to that and give those organizations a window of time to update or implement their materials. I think that council could, well, council can direct staff to work on it on an earlier timeline. However, it could be challenging to include that in the current work plan before August.
So it's not currently in staff's work plan for this year before, okay. I will take my motion back for the moment.
Very good. Counselor French, do you have something to offer at this time, or?
Had Counselor Stoner carried on, I would have seconded. I get where she's at, so I'll just hang out while Counselor Stoner's wheels turn.
Very good. Then.
Chair?
Counselor Pedengal.
Yeah, I just wonder if Ms. Morris has a suggestion or could provide clarity then, if, you know, given the short timelines and some outstanding questions, which it sounds like might require some council input, how we might address those, given the timelines and all the constraints we're facing?
Thank you, through the Chair. So for the issue on more than one grant application, I think the community foundation are just looking for clarity in terms of organizations that are larger in the community, such as the Cedar Sky School District 48, or Cedar Sky Community Services that have multiple applications, but maybe not for the same program, if council are okay with that. And then moving on into the permissive tax exemptions, there's nothing legislatively that requires or precludes us, if I'm not mistaken, please jump in CFO, as that I'm aware of. And so I believe that currently the community foundation have been accepting grants from those organizations that do receive PTEs, and just looking for clarity again from council on whether that's acceptable in, in the granting program. And then on the, the last piece, I think that's going to take the bulk of the work for staff, because we need to either decide whether these in-kind grants remain within our grant program, or if they're taken out, or if there's another stream that they go through. So that, that final one is going to be the bulk of the work in what we're looking at today.
So if I could follow up, Chair, and I guess, thank you, just on the first one, for example, the more than one application. I vaguely recall, and maybe it was in a different context, that there was a conversation about not supporting multiple applications with the idea of part of what we're trying to do here is build general capacity in the community. And so when we spread out these things more, we're, we're sort of supporting more organizations to do more work. And, and so I don't know where we end up on that. And so I guess it's that sort of thing. Are you looking then for direction that we can just leave that up to staff? Or is there a mechanism for council to sort of give some thought to some of these things? Or?
I think I'm hearing a mix of both. I think they're hoping that we might be able to provide some high-level feedback today. But I think one of the challenges is that this might require a little bit more deliberation on, so I don't know if it's that those two particular questions come back to council for future committee, the whole discussion, to provide some more nuanced feedback. For me, the like second piece around organizations already receiving permissive tax exemptions, I think the bigger concern to me are those that have partnering agreements. So a portion of the community enhancement grants are already going to Sorka. So that's like a really, really valuable program, but that we added another $7,500 into Sorka programming is a flag for me that I hadn't quite thought through when we initiated this policy. So those are the pieces that I don't think we're fully equipped to have the conversation around the table today, and maybe Ms. Glende can help me.
Ms. Glende.
Thank you, Chair. What I would recommend is that staff can go away and look at the possibility of where this discussion would happen. It may be that it doesn't affect the granting until 2025, and that's just the reality of the staff work plan and the agendas that we have. But rather than try and have the discussion on the fly, we can come back with a recommendation, certainly through agenda planning and with staff work plans.
Thank you. Any final comments, questions, council? Then it remains for me to thank our presenters, Karen Clark and Sarah Morris. I noted that the, Ms. Clark, you mentioned that the Vital Science Report will be out in a month or two. I know a few of my colleagues, as well as myself, participated in some of those sessions. They were very busy, active, and well-received. Another Squamish Community Foundation involvement and contribution. Thank you very much for today. I'm sure that we've taken some good notes, and we'll come back regarding some of the observations that you've left us with. Thank you. Mayor Hereford. Do we have a second? Counselor Stoner, any opposed? Then motion carried, and we're off to our next gig. Thank you very.